Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting of March 7th, 2023. If folks would stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Friday in the United States of America. To the Republic from which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with thirteen justices for all.
And we have our agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there is one change to the agenda today. We have provided the Board a memo regarding a water heater replacement at the All Seasons Arena, so I would add that to our administration report.
All right, thank you. Any motion?
I'll move the agenda with the addition.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same, and it passes. And I need somebody to ask to recess the board meeting for the...
I'll move recess.
No, second. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. And we can start our EDA meeting. Nancy?
Good morning, Nancy.
Good morning, Nancy.
Good morning.
How are you this morning?
I'm great.
All right. Call the EDA to... And we need an agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to this agenda today.
All right. Need a motion for the agenda?
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes. Minutes for the February 7th.
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
I got a motion, got a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. And now, the utility allowances schedule for housing choice voucher programs.
This is an annual activity that you do annually here in February and March, and it's designed to review our utility costs that we anticipate that families will be paying for their units. And so, we do collect information received from local vendors like heating, electric, water, sewer, garbage, and we also collect consumption data from our program participants to come up with estimated costs. And where we don't have... We have limited data on our families. We do use a HUD multiplication factor for different bedroom sizes so that we can get accurate numbers. And so, every year we do review these. This year, our adjustments had to do with more water sewer rates as many of our smaller communities are working with a flat fee rather than a base fee, so we had some changes there. The gas and electric, we did some increases last year, and so, we didn't need any increases there. One thing to note is that we do watch those utility rates. If utility companies do raise them throughout the year, we could come back to you with adjustments so we can make sure we're serving our clients. And just to keep in mind too, that these utility allowances, we do give you an example in here where we take the utilities that tenants are paying and add that to the rent that they're charged, and then we do compare that gross rent with our payment standards. So, every year in December, you do increase the payment standards, and this is how it ties to the rent calculation. So, we take those payments standards, compare it to what the tenants are paying for rent and utilities, and then the families pay 30% of their income towards that rent. So, today, we're asking you to approve this resolution authorizing these utility allowance schedules for the year.
Okay. And we're looking for a motion.
I'll move approval.
I'll second that.
Got a motion, got a second, any discussion?
I don't know if we got questions.
Gotta be. Lot of work was put into that. I can see that. You put everything together. Thank you very much. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same, and that passes. What else you got for us this morning?
And then, I just wanted to give you some information on some of the legislation that's going through the state that we're keeping an eye on, and just wanted to make sure that you are aware that it's going through there right now too. One of them, the first one there is a state-funded rental assistance program, and the state has done rental assistance programs in the past. We've worked with them on our Bridges program, which was a program that served people with mental health issues. And this program then would be a generic rental assistance program that would mimic the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher program that we get funded through the federal government. And actually, what the state is looking at or proposing here is to basically double the size of our housing program, or the Housing Choice Voucher here in Minnesota. And they would do it on a formula basis, and so, we would basically, we'd be looking at saying we have an increase of our voucher program doubling it. So, watching that to see if that really happens, and definitely if there is any funding or resources for that, we would be looking at applying for that and bringing that here to Blue Earth County. And the other item is a Pathways Home, and that really has to do with talking about emergency housing types of needs, and specifically, we're looking at that, watching that for capital for our shelters and working on that shelter and housing project. That funding would really help support that project and the construction of the shelter piece of the shelter and housing program. So, definitely watching that as long... And also, it has some emergency funds there for emergency needs as well as a lot of youth programs. So, watching those two, and that just gives you some information. In the next month, I'm sure we'll be hearing a lot more on that, so just wanted to share that with you as well.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That all we have this morning?
That would be very exciting if we got that funding.
Yeah, that'd be great. All right. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion?
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. All right. And we've called this meeting back to order, and we have our... County Ditch 79. Craig.
Morning, Craig.
Good morning.
Morning, Craig.
Okay. Blue Earth County Ditch 79 watershed is approximately 480 acres in size and located in Judson Township. A petition for improvement was received on September 19th, 2022. On October 11th, 2022, the Drainage Authority appointed Charles J. Brandl, License Engineer at ISG, as Project Engineer. Mr. Brandl was ordered to prepare a preliminary survey report. The preliminary survey report was filed with the Blue Earth County Property and Environmental Resources Department on February 6th, 2023. At today's meeting, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we are requesting the Drainage Authority approve the... I needs an order setting the hearing date for April 4th, 2023.
I'll move approval.
Say, got a motion, a second, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks, Craig.
Short, we like short. Is Carrie here? We're zooming you right in here, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. Well, I'm here to talk about broadband again.
You know, and I'm reading this, and this is exciting.
This is very exciting stuff. So, we were approached by two ISPs again to help with funding for a couple of projects that they have going on. One of them with Charter, that includes Garden City, Rapidan, Decoria, and Lyra Townships, and South Cabria, and Judson. It's very exciting. These are areas that are either underserved or unserved, and I think this would be something very worthwhile for Blue Earth County to invest in, and this is just like what we did back in August where no one actually received any funding, but we're hoping this time, crossing our fingers, that they'll get funding for these projects.
Okay.
Any questions?
Looking for a motion on this, I bet.
All right, yes, sir.
I'll move approval.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on this?
I don't have any technical questions to ask, but this is, it's just alarming how much it costs to run these lines. I look at those numbers per crossing, or what are you referring to?
Per passing.
Per passing, and it's like, oh my goodness.
Yes.
Horribly expensive.
So, is it most of the expense putting it in the ground?
In the ground, yes.
And I wondered before, is what, would that expense be shortened if every time we built a new road, if we put in the conduit already?
That's a great question, one that we've...
Because I know a lot of counties do that. I know Scott County does that whenever they build a new road. They put conduit in there for, just for that reason, even if there's no... That way, they could put the fiber in after the fact, and that because digging and putting the conduit in is a major expense.
Yep. It's that dig once philosophy, is what they refer to that as, yep.
Bob, can you refresh our memory on how we're funding this, or my memory?
Sure, I was just gonna jump in and remind the board that we did allocate $500,000 out of our $13 million of American Rescue Plan funding to support this effort, and so, you know, we've adjusted, I think, the per passing amount to kind of fit within that budgeted amount.
So, that came, that money came from the federal government?
That's correct.
Yeah, we didn't use any of the state...
That we're using AR.
The hope is that this would generate support from the state of Minnesota under the Border to Border Program, and that's when Carrie mentioned, we didn't receive any funding for Blue Earth County in 2022 from that program, but there is another allocation at the state level that's being considered, so that's why you're seeing it today.
Well, let's, let's hope with this that we can, number one, we can get the approval to have this funding?
Correct.
From, from the federal government?
Yes, and their applications are looked a little bit more highly upon if they have county-funded assistance.
Right.
They get higher points scored.
So, and we've got a motion, we got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. That passes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Ryan?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Public Works.
Morning, Ryan.
Morning, Ryan.
Gee, maybe you heard that question you were talking about with conduit.
Maybe.
Maybe. Pretend that I did.
Kind of what I...
Put it in, I just wanted to know who's paying for it.
Yeah, well, that's kind of why I...
I understand completely.
As you guys know, I can get anything done with the right level of funding, so...
They can build anything.
I kind of figured that was gonna be the answer.
I, and I, I didn't know how much extra funding for a road, if you're building a new road. I mean, putting in, at the time you're digging, putting in that conduit tunnel or whatever it is, and putting the conduit in, at the same time, is that gonna cost a big increase? And that's, it doesn't sound like that would...
You'll save money on not having to bore underneath like the paved surfaces and the roads and things like that, but that can even now with the size of those conduits are relatively small, can be done fairly economically. So, the cost of the materials is still there, and it's not like, there's still an obligation to go through and install that conduit on, so it's not like it's laid with a bunch of other stuff. It's laid as its own entity. When you watch a city reconstruct, you know, a city street, they dig it up several times. They take the pavement out, they dig up the sewer, they dig up the water main separately, and then they dig up the services separately, and put all, the dirt kind of goes in and out and in and out, and somewhat similar on our projects. They're gonna dig that trench for that conduit, specifically for that conduit, so you're gonna have that cost on the front end or back end, the material costs. You might save a little on, a little bit of turf establishment and not directionally drilling under pavements.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Down the road, we wanna include it, we can certainly talk about how we can get it done.
Well, it's not like we haven't talked about it before.
Right.
And I do understand there's an extra cost, it's just that with all the things of trying to get the fiber laid now after the fact, you know, if we could do that kind of stuff, I mean, it's not like we build that many new roads every year, but if we can get, if we can start going year by year, you know, a couple miles here and a couple miles here, that would make a difference. I would think, maybe I'm wrong.
You need to just know too, what size needs to be out there, what type of conduit ducts and what size, how many, where do they need to be, where are the service?
Obviously.
Stuff like that.
Thank you. Now, we can get on to our action items.
First action item is consideration of a resolution for the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Outdoor Recreation Grant Funding Opportunity. This is for replacement of a playground equipment at Daly Park. This is the same grant that we used for the project that's gonna be completed this year. We were successful in obtaining 50% funding for the Bray Park Beach Playground Equipment Replacement. So, we're hopeful that now we've had one successful grant application for this use that we'll have a second one and utilize this to cover half of the project costs. So, with that, I would recommend approval of the resolution included in the packet.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second, any discussion?
Is it, what kind of dollars are you talking about?
If I remember correctly, it's in the neighborhood of applying for about $75,000.
Seventy-five thousand?
Yeah, this is the large industrial playground equipment that's very expensive.
It's not cheap, I know that, no doubt.
No.
Hasn't been.
Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes.
Okay. Second action item is consideration of bids for State Aid Project 007-616035. This is for the reconstruction of County State Aid Highway 16 from the La Sura River to County State Aid Highway 90. We received four bids. The low bid was RNG Construction of Marshall at $3,451,582.12. The engineer's estimate was $3,179,671, so RNG's estimate was 8.55% over our engineer's estimate. The high bid was Minnesota Paving Materials, that was almost $3.9 million, 22.31% over our engineer's estimate. So, we tried to account for an anticipated level of inflation, and obviously, it's still running rampant and having significant impact. As we looked, you know, we're seeing impacts associated with fuel costs, we're seeing impacts associated with pipe and culverts. It's, it's all over the place in our bids, but we received quite a few bids. The project was bid early, so with that being said, no, it's likely gonna be our main grading project for this year. I would recommend approval of this contract to RNG Construction.
I'll move it.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion?
Your next project.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes.
Okay. Action item number three is consideration of bids for the 2023 Maintenance Gravel Furnish and Crushing Contract for furnishing and crushing 40,000 tons of maintenance gravel. This year, we received two bids, Minnesota Paving Materials and W. Lorenz &amp; Sons Construction. W. Lorenz was low bid at $6.95 per ton for a grand total of $278,000. This is about 23 cents higher than last year's contract. Again, seeing that regular sourced inflation that we've unfortunately grown accustomed to, I would recommend an award to Wendell Lorenz &amp; Sons.
I'll move it.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second from Mark. Any discussion? It's interesting when we look at this as what our costs are just for doing crushing, you know?
Furnishing and crushing the gravel.
Yeah.
Doesn't include spreading it or...
Yeah, it's not even spreading it out.
We'll have another contract for hauling it next year.
I mean, people don't understand what the costs are to keep the road across the county. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. All right, go ahead.
Next added action item is consideration of the 2023 motor grader rental contract. As has happened the past few years, we've only received one bid from Erosion Control Plus Incorporated, which was previously Wertz Construction. Their total price is $90,450. As you can see, their unit prices are up from last year, but with them being the sole person bidding this and knowing that our only other alternative is another motor grader and another full-time employee to cover this plow route, and having had past discussions on that, I would recommend award of the contractor, Erosion Control Plus Incorporated.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and got a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes.
Right. And in case you were wondering what it would cost to buy a new motor grader, I've got a bid in here for it.
I was wondering.
We've got bids for an all-wheel-drive motor grader with a snow wing and a hydraulic-mounted Packer roller, which was included in the budget. Our two bids, as usual, came in from RDO Equipment for a John Deere 772G and Ziegler Incorporated for a Caterpillar 150. By the time we incorporate the state bid price plus adjustments to meet the county specs minus the trade-in value, the Caterpillar was $362,950 to boot, the John Deere was $319,055 to boot. Additionally, the Handy Hitch, Walk, and Packer RDO was $35,557 compared to Ziegler's $42,640. The joystick control is standard on the Cat, but it's not included on the John Deere unless we would want to upgrade to that. To date, we have not incorporated joystick control. That's the way the industry is going. We can still get them with the steering wheel and antlers to run the different hydraulic controls. I anticipate someday we'll be forced into that when the joystick is the prevailing way of the industry, but for now, we're sticking with the lower-cost option. So, with that, I would recommend award of the purchase to RDO Equipment for the John Deere 772G as well as the Handy Hitch PP90 walking and little Packer.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, we got a second from Patty. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
So, do the, do the operators prefer the machine we have now, or do they want to go to the joystick?
I...
When are they ready? I mean, it's an electronic item, so I mean, the sooner, the longer we wait.
It's something that at some point, we're gonna have to make the switch over. I know in the past, you know, we talked about the four versus six-wheel drive, it was given direction to go all six-wheel drive. This is something that I think if we started, we've gotta just make it our norm so that all of the equipment in the future is consistent and the same.
Yeah, I mean, I would like you to ask your operators if, you know, if they're ready to switch. I guess it's coming. If it's more efficient, they can operate it easier, better or not. I don't know if they have exposure to it, but certainly ask the question and...
Okay. And if, if so, then we would be approved to...
I'm okay going to that style.
Yeah.
If that's what you guys really want.
Yeah, it's up to the operator.
It's still a lower number, I don't have them all added up, but it's still a lower number, yeah, even with the...
Correct.
Still be way lower than the other piece of equipment.
Well, I do appreciate that. I will have that conversation with our maintenance folks and gauge their comfort with it. I think from a standpoint, if you've ever looked at that, you know, there's, I think there's four or five hydraulic levers on the right and four or five on the left to control the different aspects of the blade, so it's a little more intuitive to utilize the joystick.
Sure. If our operators are willing to take that step, I'm comfortable with making that step at this point.
Like you said, once you take the step...
Yep, everybody's gonna want it, I'm sure.
Everybody's, well, and we're gonna wanna put it on every other vehicle that we get from then on, so...
Just a thought.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, for sure. We will take that into account and send the purchase agreement through. Thank you. Well, I think you gotta go yet maybe, but...
Correct. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
All right. And what you got next?
We had both, right?
We have a motion and a second, we need a...
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. All right.
All right. The next action item is consideration of award of professional services agreement for consultant engineering design services for County State Aid Highway 82, which is Victory Drive. This is for the segment from Hoffman to Fair Street that we had planned for reconstruction in our transportation improvement program. The city of Mankato, as we had discussed previously, had indicated they may be short on funding due to the improvements that they plan to make on Riverfront Drive as well as the Veterans Memorial Bridge. So, they had asked if this project could be subdivided into two separate portions. So, the engineering proposal was set up so that the consultant would design it all at once, but they'll deliver two separate plans sets that can be constructed, so the South segment could be constructed independent of North segment, or they could both be combined into one contract. We'll have to make that decision as we go down the road if we think it'd be more economical and advantageous to just build it all at once, and perhaps the county could carry the debt or the cost of it until it's reimbursed. We received three proposals from our three go-to firms. We're very fortunate to have three really good firms that we like to work with and who will propose to us on these types of projects and have a good knowledge base. So, the first proposal received was from Bolton Mink, and you can see the aggregated scoring. This is a average scoring that was established between myself, between Stefan and Nick, who is our lead design engineer. So, we each subjectively score these, and then we sit down and discuss our scores, conglomerate them, to come up with an average. And we also provide a breakdown of the hours and the total cost. So, there's different approaches that consultants can use. They may have more experienced staff and hope to be more efficient versus maybe younger staff, but build in several more hours. So, you'll see that as you see a variety in those hours. That's my, my assumption of why we're seeing such a big spread of the difference of the hours that are put into the project. They were very close. In fact, the proposals from Bolton Mink, and all three were good proposals, but the ones from Bolton Mink and Stone Brook really stood out in this circumstance. We believe Stone Brook's proposal was just a, just a hair better, and would recommend award of the contract to Stone Brook Engineering for $299,856. I will add, I've never, ever seen the three consultants' proposals come in within a thousand dollars of each other.
That's amazing.
Unless we establish a budget, which we did not do. So, how that happened, I don't know.
On a $299,000 deal, that's...
Exactly. It's $300,000. It's, it's, yeah, that's, that's what I was looking at, I think, this is amazing.
It made it really difficult, because if you look at our breakdown, the cost is 35% of the total scoring.
Yeah.
And they're basically all neck and neck, very difficult to use that as any type of differentiator.
So, the total hours is what they estimate they'll have into the project? Is that where that number's coming from?
Correct. So, what we thought, one of the reasons I think we gave the edge to Stone Brook was because they have obviously quite a bit more hours into the project.
Right, yeah.
So, if adjustments are needed, there's less likelihood of a potential for overrun.
Going over.
Or there might be potential for savings if it goes, the design goes...
Sure.
Well, too, where they don't utilize, because we don't pay a lump sum, we pay on a time and a material base not to exceed this amount.
Yeah. And so, their labor rate's just a little cheaper.
Correct.
That makes sense to me.
Where's Stone Brook out of?
They're out of...
See?
Yeah, Burnsville.
Okay.
They worked for us before.
So, easy enough to send somebody down here.
Forty-one and Casaw seven, Mapleton, recently.
They were all good. Engineering were amazing, all three of them. Need a motion? So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Meyer, second by Patty. Any more discussion? All in favor to have Stone Brook as the engineering firm for this? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. And that passes.
Okay. We've got some informational updates for you. County State Highway sixteen, the project we just awarded work should be scheduled to begin in mid-May. That's usually when weight restrictions start to come off and we see the contractor being able to really resume work occasionally. They can start as early as April 15th, however. Generally speaking, that's, that's a hard target for them to really be able to efficiently pursue any work that early in the year unless things are already picking up from the previous year. Casaw thirteen from one to US 169, the final project plans are being edited for state aid approval. Right-of-way acquisition is underway. Jack is making initial contact and getting offer packets out to folks, so that's moving along. Casaw twenty-six from fifty-seven to Minnesota Highway twenty-two, we're wrapping up right-of-way easements. We discussed this last month on the, the residence where the landowner had passed away. We were able to meet with the, the son who was inheriting it and the real estate agent that was still tied up in probate with the courts. We're actually reevaluating our storm sewer outfall and contemplating and pushing it all the way to the west closer to the intersection with Casaw fifty-seven. That'll incur more total project cost, however, we, we learned that there's some erosion issues within that ravine. And we're concerned that if we outlet into that ravine at the location that was previously designed, we're going to run into future ravine stabilization project costs. So I think we feel it's better to outlet into the creek farther to the west where we can better maintain and reduce that future risk. So we're working on that. We are still challenged with the tree removals and getting necessary easements and things of that nature to take trees prior to March 31st. We will likely be doing that with our maintenance forces. So we're very hopeful to hit that deadline. It's, it's coming up very quickly. And Casaw eleven from the west county line to Casaw six, the design is underway and progressing and scheduled for reconstruction in 2024. Eighty-two, we just approved the design contract, so that'll begin soon. The topographic survey still needs to be completed. And obviously it's going to be a struggle until the snow melts or we can at least get close to finding where the, the base of the surface is. And we also discussed the County State Highway fifteen bridge last month, which was that large steel plate arch pipe. We've ordered a new concrete culvert, box culvert to replace that. We're anticipating receiving that mid to late August. So our intent is to let a contractor in May or so that would hire a contractor to install that pipe and repave the road and get that done yet before fall harvest. Our 2023 Batumis overlays will be, bids will be open on March 29th. Currently being bid is a base bid plus add alternates due to the significant degree of inflation that we're seeing. So we'll be base bidding Casaw eleven and Casaw twelve overlays, which are the final wearing courses of our projects from last year. And in addition to that, as add alternates, we'll be adding Casaw fifteen from St. Clair to the east county line, Casaw twenty-seven and twenty-eight from Eagle Lake to Minnesota Highway eighty-three, and Casaw forty-nine east of St. Clair. So we may, we'll set it up that we can pick one or all of those to add them into the contract depending on what prices we see to, to ensure that we're kind of working within our financial confines. Maintenance crews have been busy with snow and ice control operations again. We're stockpiling materials, just trying to keep up. If we do get a little bit of downtime, they've been working on stockpiling P rock and things like that for our summer operations, trying to get, get ahead of it. We, I don't even want to tell you how much salt we've gone through because it's, we've completely blown that budget unfortunately, but with the type of winter we've had.
One of the radio announcers I heard, they says kind of like the winter that never quits.
It feels like a never-ending story a little bit, so. Yes. And I think we're predicted to get a significant shot again Wednesday, Friday, this week. Yes. With warmer temperatures, our gravel roads are becoming very soft. We've seen metal over the county crews are cautiously adding rock to help stabilize areas. So the goal is to kind of try to get out there in the morning while the frost is still in the road and dump rock on the road and then help stabilize the, bridge the surface to get us through. But it's, uh, it's a year where we didn't have a terribly deep frost because of the amount of snow that we received so early. And so things are very soupy, very wet right now. And we still are trying to get some tree removals done this month before our April 1st recommended guidelines for no longer taking trees. The last item I have is an update of the Rapidan Dam. On February 10th, I received a letter from the FERC verifying our 2022 emergency action plan. Status report and EAP updates satisfactorily fulfilled the reviewing and updating requirements for the EAP. On February 10th, I received an email from the FERC providing updated EAP information. That updated EAP will be due on April 7th, 2023, so we've already started working on those updates. On February 22nd, we electronically submitted a notice of intent to file application for exemption surrender for the Rapidan hydroelectric project to the FERC. That notice informs the FERC of our intent to apply for licensure exemption surrender and provides project information and potentially impacted parties. That was the document I think we discussed last month. And on February 22nd, BAR also provided an updated estimated schedule for the FERC licensure surrender process. In March, a work on developing and sending the final letter to resource agencies, tribes, and political subdivisions requesting comments prior to surrendering the application, the surrender application to the FERC. They'll also develop a one-page summary. We've already seen a draft of that. It's just kind of explains the process and why we're going through the, the FERC licensure surrender, why it's necessary, et cetera. So that'll go out and could also be used for us as an online informational item. In April, BAR will receive comments from those agencies and prepare a draft surrender application, incorporating those comments for the county's review and then subsequent surrender to the FERC. Future milestones will also include publishing notice on the surrender application and the FERC initiating a 30-day comment period, the FERC completing the environmental review and determining need for further review. I don't need deadlines on those because a lot of those are going to be in the hands of the FERC and out of our control. And then finally, the FERC D hack, Division of Hydro Power Administration compliance and dam safety will have to confer with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources regarding the transition of those regulatory jurisdictions. That's really where we're going to have to figure out. Are we going to be required to repair the gates? What are other conditions are going to be included in that, in that transfer if it is permitted? I strongly anticipate something will come out of that and we'll be required to make some semblance of improvements to the dam. But until they have that meeting, I hope we could be in the room to at least be part of that discussion. However, I'm not certain that that's a, I'm not certain that that's an opportunity we're going to get, but I'm going to ask for it, so.
For those that are listening, could you explain what the acronym FERC stands for?
Federal Energy Regulatory Commission.
Thank you.
The federal overseers and regulatory agency for the Rapidan Dam as it produces hydroelectricity. Yep.
Just I was going through the letter, it didn't explain that online and I thought, well, some people don't understand what these acronyms stand for.
There's a lot of them when you get into hydro power.
Yes, there are. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan. Thank you very much. Appreciate your work.
Absolutely, have a great day.
And now it looks like we jumped to our county attorney. Mr. McDermott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I don't have a whole lot to report. Things status quo for the most part. I have a few more cases going on than I would like, but that's the business we're in. Actually, starting in the beginning of April, we'll be back to full staff for the first time since mid-June of last year. So we've been experiencing the labor shortages in the area. Believe it or not, there's not enough attorneys in the state, so. But if you have any questions, please let me know.
Any, any questions for Mr. McDermott?
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thanks, Pat. Looks like we jumped to administration, Bob.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is county board minutes for February 21st.
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Uh, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Passes, go ahead.
Next would be the bills for the two weeks indicated.
All right, I'll move the bills.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Passes.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number eight in your packet. It is the Human Resources Department agenda. Just have informational items for the board today. We have filled a couple of positions, starting with a min-choices assessor in our Human Services Department as well as a technical support specialist in our Information Technology Department. We did receive a resignation of a correctional officer in our jail, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position as well as a resignation of a social worker in our community-based coordinator, Yellow Line Project. So we've initiated recruitment to refill that position along with three other positions where we had some internal movement as a result of some new positions that were approved by the board. And so we're beginning recruitment to refill those backfills of movement within the Human Services Department. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have on any of those HR-related items.
All right, any questions?
All right, item number nine in your packet is the Commissioner's Committee assignments. We have added a couple of items related to NACO in terms of activity and committee assignments. Commissioner O'Connor was appointed to the Finance and Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. And then Commissioner Stuenberg appointed to the NACO Board of Directors. So I believe those are the two changes on the list at this point. And so just seeking approval of the board of this committee list.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Congratulations to you.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? That's been approved, thank you.
Item number 10 in your packet is memo regarding an on-sale liquor license. Morgan Creek Vineyard has submitted required paperwork now for an on-sale liquor license. This license allows them to sell beer in accordance with our farm winery ordinance. The attorney and sheriff have both reviewed the license and so we're recommending approval of this license for the rest of 2023.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? That passes, thank you.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 11 in your packet. It is somewhat of a unique item in my time as administrator anyway to come before the board asking for support for moving ahead with a bid related to County Ditch 35. The board is aware that the Minnesota Department of Transportation has submitted an appeal in terms of the assessment of tile work on this particular ditch system. And there is special provision in statute that allows the county to continue to move forward with bidding a project, even though that appeal has been filed. So we have worked with our attorneys, Rinke Noonan, who have reviewed statute and have advised the county that it's probably in the best interest of the ditch system to continue to move ahead and seek public bids for County Ditch 35, even though this appeal from MINDOT is out there. The theory behind it is that the appeal will take a period of time and with cost increases that we're seeing, obviously, Ryan's report kind of proves that out, that the cost of the project could increase in that time. So the feeling is it's still a worthwhile project to move ahead with while that appeal is pending. So seeking board support for moving ahead with that public bid process.
I'll move that.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
That one, we're relatively close on benefits to repair or improvements.
Um, there, the attorney is saying they believe that it's still feasible even with that appeal. If MINDOT is successful with their appeal, those costs would be shared by the rest of the ditch system, but it's still being viewed as feasible.
Okay, so it still gets, it gets closer, but it's still feasible.
That's my understanding.
Okay, and if we get a good bid on it, that'll help us.
Right.
But if we get a bad bid, that could put us over the top. So this could be an interesting process to watch.
It's possible this might not be a done deal yet, but.
I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with this because of the fact that the litigation we have isn't a big chunk of the project. It is just a small piece, so I, again, I appreciate that it's in the benefits. I'm more worried about the bid coming back, right? So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? That passes.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, at your seats was a memo from the city manager of Mankato regarding All Seasons Arena. Through some routine maintenance inspections, they did discover that a large water heater at All Seasons Arena is currently leaking. The memo notes that they believe that water heater was installed in 1988. So I don't know why it doesn't last longer than 30-some years, but apparently it's reached the end of its useful life. But the estimated cost of a replacement is about $27,594 for the actual unit. But because they're looking to put in tankless heaters in kind of a series, there will be some electrical work that's needed, so they're estimating that at about an additional $10,000. Under the current All Seasons Arena Joint Powers Agreement, there is a provision in that agreement that says any capital expenditure over $25,000 must come back to the respective partners for approval. And so that's why you're seeing it today. The estimated cost is closer to $40,000. And so the All Seasons Arena Joint Powers Board did recommend bringing it to our respective partners for approval to move ahead with that replacement.
No, no. Ben, second tip, I'm going to vote for support and move it, I guess I'll move it.
Okay, got a motion?
I'll second it.
Got a second? Any discussion?
Got to fix it.
Got to have it.
Got to have it.
I'm glad they're all tankless, they're next for us.
Yeah, like you said, it's, uh, things don't last forever. You know, it's put in in the eighties and.
Still there.
It's still working, but, you know, that's, that's going to be a minor part of that, that building, so.
Yeah, the good news is it'll reduce the cost of the ongoing improvements that are being discussed, but the bad news is it's here before we were ready to make some of those improvements. But I'm sure the users who want to shower after using the ice rink will appreciate your support.
Yeah, just more fun to come, that's all.
I agree, I agree. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same? That passes.
That's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
All right, so we will jump to our reports from Commissioners. Patty, you want to start us off?
Sure, um, I was on a little vacation, so I was gone for a week. And my first event back was with Nature Energy. And then I had Region Nine orientation and I went to the land use workshop, which any new commissioner should go to. Absolute, got a lot out of it.
Maybe in some of those ones that have been on for a while.
Maybe, there was a, the room was packed.
Really?
Yeah, from the whole state. I was, I was sitting by people from Cook County. So it was interesting. It was good.
That stuff that affects the whole state. I mean, all the way from Cook County all the way down to, I mean, it's, every county, all 87 counties, it gets affected, so.
Well, it gave me a better feel for planning and zoning because I had very little knowledge in that world. So I feel a little safer now.
Enough to be dangerous, right?
Probably, yeah. Yeah, Pat will be calling me next week. That's it.
All right, Martin.
Uh, let's see, we had the AMC at the conference on the 21st. Everything was virtual. So it seems sort of like a blur with it because, yeah. Not being there. Uh, and of course, you know, we met then with our legislators, House and Senate, virtually, all of them in our area. And then it's Thursday, the 21st, had AMC Board of Directors, actually. I'm on that now, so it's interesting, all that's all virtual. Vance was on it. And let's see, we had our, had a partners for housing meeting on the 21st later in, in person. And we did have Pedal Pass Poverty last Saturday before. Uh, and I want to thank everybody. And I want to thank everybody here that contributed. And we did, I haven't seen the final figures yet. It's over fifty thousand, I guess, but anyway, kind of the format changed a little bit. We had, I guess people thought it ran too long, so we went down to eight, eight peoples to ten, so, and it's all cut down the time. I think the problem was, yeah, then you cut down on your money too, so. Anyway, it was successful and we've had it back at the YMCA, which is as, as good because that's where we originally started, so it's, it's great. And then twenty, let's see. Like that? That pretty well, yeah, pretty well. I guess I got. Had on Monday, the twenty-seventh, that's it, we had a natural energy discussion on, and then on the twenty-eighth, did have an airport commission, which was virtual. And of course, if you might realize that, yeah, the city, kind of going to put that in a category like neighborhood groups that, and they're not going to have actually airport commission meetings at, we'll have one more and then I'll be done with that format. And then I guess on the March first, we had department head, so that concludes my report. Mr. Chair?
All right. Kip?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Already mentioned was the Nat, Natural, Nature Energy meeting we had over in Lake Crystal, and it was sure nice to have Kevin there with the perspective of a farmer and someone in the business. I think he brought a lot of good discussion to the table. And it'll be interesting to see how that moves forward. I don't personally think we should have a whole lot of interest in that if the city of, Lake Crystal wants to do it, they might as well get the tax base off it because they're the one that's going to take the heat on it if, if it moves forward, so. But I'm sure there'll be much more to discuss about that. Then that afternoon, I was all the way over to Wasika County for County Ditch Eleven project overview and redetermination of benefits, which is a huge ditch. We got to the meeting, or actually on my way over to the meeting, we found out there's about fifteen hundred acres that weren't put in to the viewer's report, so. But it's a thousands of acres of land, but it's still fifteen hundred acres is enough to pursue and try to get it pulled into the system. So we were able to get through most of the meeting, but unable to approve it because of this outline piece that comes through. It's from La Sura County, so now we have to set up a three joint powers, or three joint ditch meeting and get all three of us involved. So got a little complicated, but they worked through it pretty well. Had some four oh three discussion on the governance language with my SECV connections. Department head was already mentioned. Planning and zoning, which we'll see two weeks from today, was, had one continuation of a VRBO, which I think most of you had had contact with some of the neighbors around that one. And then there was a second one that was approved. So we'll see both of those at the next meeting here, and, and they were both approved, but the one was just continued from the month before. Then I had an SECV Legislative Committee meeting, and we're just working diligently with the representatives up in the cities and trying to get some legislation passed this season. And then we are also through SECV and my PST Training and Certification Work Group, which is trying to certify nine-one-one dispatchers. They're putting together some programming and some certification for that and try to take that to legislation next year. That is my report, Mr. Chair.
All right. Well, mine has a lot to do with what everybody else did. After our board meeting, the AMC Ledge Conference was all on Zoom because of the snowstorm we had. Tuesday evening, the twenty-first, I attended the AMC Rural Counties Caucus, and they have a different director now, which seems to ease the, the stress level of a lot of counties that are, were not members. The meeting went great. I mean, it was a really good meeting. Then the next day, next two days, we had our AMC Ledge Conference and our Board of Directors meeting that me and Mark attended. On Friday, I had a Personnel Committee meeting with TDS. And then on Monday, I attended that Nature Energy with all of us. In fact, all five of us were there. Good meeting, and I tend to agree with you, Kip, that I, I would much rather have Lake Crystal jump into this and, but if, if not, I think we have to keep a close eye on, if, because if Lake Crystal doesn't, our planning and zoning is going to have to look at it. The next day, I had Library Day at the, at the Capitol, being the chair of TDS. I, I went up there and talked to our senators and congressmen, our legislators. And then the day after that, I had my Transportation Day at the Capitol. So I basically talked to the same people on two different subjects. So they, they said, what are you coming back tomorrow for? But that's okay. It's good, it's good to have that contact. They know that you're concerned with issues that are happening in, in the county. On the second, I had NACO Transportation, and let's see, and that's about it. So that's the end of my report. It looks like we can recess if we're talking about going to the Greater Mankato Growth Annual...
Actually, Mr. Chair, you should adjourn this meeting today.
We should adjourn and then go into there. Okay?
Yes.
All right.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second. I got a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same? Thank you very much.
So...
That lunch is posted, so that's right.